That turn the wheel downstairs that power the Internet here.
Did you give them a Red Bull?
Yeah, that's right. We gave them a Red Bull, so it should be very fast Internet.
Ready to go. Okay, we're gonna... Are we gonna get public comments from that dog? Okay, reconvene the meeting. Do we have to do roll call? I guess we do.
Yeah, we should.
Yes, roll call, please.
Oh, no.
Oh, no.
We lost it?
Except that was me on my phone.
No, Brandon!
What'd you do?
I killed it accidentally. No.
Crashed the network?
No, I ended the meeting. I was trying to leave on my phone so it wouldn't cause feedback, and then I ended the meeting.
Are you still on?
No.
No, people need to jump back on, son of a gun.
All right, bring the dog back. Now we're back. We're back? There we go.
I'll take your phone. I'll hold your phone. Put that phone... Then I'll wind the meeting.
Jeez Louise.
Okay. All right, so roll call, please.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Delvs?
Here.
Commissioner Kara Petkov?
Here.
Commissioner Locke?
Here.
Chair LaPage?
Here. Let us begin.
That's like minor compared to other stuff.
Turn off that microphone. So, we were...
We just finished the applicant's testimony.
Okay, so we were...
General public.
General public. Okay, I'm gonna ask for comments from people in the chamber first. David, come forward.
Good evening, David O'Neill, and I'm really glad that they're gonna do something with this home. It's a great location. I am here tonight with the responsibility of representing the Carmel Preservation Association, which now has over 1,000 signatures supporting the cause of preserving the charming character of Carmel. Please note that in the general plan, it does say that certain design elements, quote, "contribute to the village character of the city." These form a contrast to the glass, steel, plastic, and featureless gray concrete so often found in other more urban cities. In our research, trying to understand the difference between commercial and residential elements and design elements, we came up with different characteristics that were described. Residential projects have small amounts of glass for windows. Commercial projects have large glass facades. Commercial also have rectangular shapes and flat roofs. Utilitarian appearance versus artistic design, lack of organic shape, and are mechanical or utilitarian in appearance. There are 12 quotes from the general plan regarding residential character for Carmel where they require it or request it, and I won't read them all because that would be annoying. A few are: "The city of Carmel by the Sea is hereby determined to be primarily, essentially, and predominantly a residential city. Protect the city's unique residential village character. Intensify enforcement on zoning codes that maintain the residential character of the city. The preservation of the residential character of Carmel is central to all land use. Preserve the residential village character. Carmel by the Sea is internationally recognized as a unique, small coastal community with a residential village character. We would therefore suggest that this design is not in residential character." There are also design guidelines that are not being addressed. In the design guidelines, it says, "Flat roofs may be used to a limited extent on smaller one-story structures. They should not be used on large buildings or two-story elements. Basic gable and hip roofs are traditional, and their use is encouraged. In general, moderately pitched roofs 412 and 612 are preferred. Shallow to moderately pitched roofs are appropriate on one-story buildings. Divided light windows are encouraged. The use of grand doorway and pitcher windows on street-facing elevations is discouraged and limit the use of specialty windows that add to building bulk." Thank you for your time.
Good, thank you. Is anyone else in the chamber that wants to speak? Come forward, please.
Hi, good evening. I'm Judson Althoff, and my wife Laura and I here are representing the project that's before you. I'd just like to start by thanking you for your time in evaluating our proposal and to thank Brandon and Evan for all of their work. Although Evan, we've not ever met personally, I feel like I know you deeply and personally through all of the interactions you've had with Craig and my wife throughout this past year. And we've learned a lot from this project, everything from the difference between a story and a floor and all of the regulations that make this a really special place. This is our dream home and the home we hope to retire in. We have four kids. We hope to have our grandchildren play on the beach out in front of the house, and we've worked really hard to make Carmel a part of our lives. We raised our kids in the Bay Area and lived in the Bay Area for 15 years and took them to the aquarium growing up. We're big contributors to the aquarium. And when I took a job in Seattle 10 years ago, we always knew we wanted to come back to this area. So, we had an opportunity through dear friends of ours, the Boils, who live here, to come to know Carmel. And tried to buy our first house here during the pandemic. Failed three times before we finally got a small cottage on Dolores. And then just six months later, this property became available, and it was like a dream come true for us. So, we think that as it relates to the structure, we've worked actually pretty hard to try to appreciate what Carmel represents. It's a big part of why we're proposing removing a lot of the big bulk associated with the mansard roof, taking down the big chimneys that obscure some of the views from our neighbors behind us. We went through multiple iterations on the design and took a lot of feedback from the people around us to make sure that we weren't obscuring their views. As it pertains to the permeable space, Evan and I agree with you. Actually, I feel like we have more work to do there because we do very much care about the land, and the red brick that exists there today is appalling, and it's something we want to take out. It's a big part of why we proposed the plan that we have. And so, we take your feedback, and I do something we want to go work on. As it pertains to the design itself, I mean, I guess everybody has their qualitative opinion, and the prior gentleman who spoke certainly has his. We believe our design is actually emblematic of a lot of the other designs that are actually on scenic and throughout Carmel and the Golden Rectangle, and it's part of the reason why we did it the way we did, to embrace Carmel stone and the nature of the town. And I guess the final piece that I would address is this item number 35. And it may seem quite trivial, and I guess in the grand scheme of things it is. The reason why we've chosen to design the sort of rounded window is because it's actually the most beautiful view in the entire home, looking out over Butterfly Point, and it allows us to take in more light from that vantage point versus sort of the choppy cut-up piece that we have, which is why we sort of took square footage from the back of the home and tried to apply it to the front. But the rules are the rules. You know, if that's not something that could be accepted, then we're happy to live by them. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Carol, come on forward.
Thank you. Carol Ho. I'm glad that they appreciate Carmel and love Carmel, and I hope that they can also appreciate that the design that they are presenting does not look like Carmel character and that I hope that they would rethink their design to fit within the character of Carmel. And I guess that's all I have to say. It's getting late. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chamber that wants to speak to us about this application? I don't see anybody coming forward, so I will call on the people online. Shirley Moon, you have your hand up. You want to unmute yourself and address us?
Yes, I just have a quick comment on any design that is agreed upon for that site. My comment is regarding the pathway that is a public walk-through from San Antonio to scenic. And the fence currently has all kinds of irrigation pipes attached to the public side, which I think is totally inappropriate. And I'd like for that to have a restriction, that any fence that is remodeled or put up there could not have any irrigation or other pipe being attached to the public side. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Anyone else online wish to speak to us about this application? I don't see any hands going up. I'm gonna close the public comments. Open it up to the commission for their comments.
Mr. Chair, sorry to interrupt. We have one comment that was received via email while the hearing was going on. They were actually on earlier, but they had to leave, so they sent an email. If Evan could read that in to the record on their behalf, we would be appreciative of that.
Evan's gonna read it in?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Evan.
Yeah, so this is from the neighbor directly to the south. "My name is Carrie Chaney. I'm the owner of the property directly to the south of the Althoff residence. I had a few reservations with the initial design that was proposed in May, but I want to thank the Althoffs, the architect, and staff for listening to those concerns and coming up with an outstanding revision. I support the revised project and look forward to its completion. Thank you, Carrie Chaney."
Okay, thank you. All right. I think that's everybody who wanted to talk to us about this, so close the public comments, open up the commissioners. Commissioner Kara Petkov, would you like to begin?
I appreciate the work the architect and homeowner did on this project. I see they spent a lot of time thinking about details. The proposed home is very different, obviously, from the one that exists today, so I understand the feedback from the community. I'm not sure how we define too much glass or too little glass. I would be happier if we had less on that particular project, especially since when we were on-site today, I went on the other side on the walkway along the beach, and you can actually see the main level and also the upper level clearly from the sidewalk, so you can see clearly into the house. So, a lot of what's happening in this house will be visible from the street. We should be careful about that. I had some concerns about the landscaping plan, especially since I saw some trees planted in the back in the very narrow planters. I don't think that they're gonna grow in that environment. You need more than two and a half, three feet to plant a reasonable size of tree in the back. But I understand what they're trying to do with all the planters along the way. I agree with staff recommendation to have the planters or the wall covered by a wooden fence so that it's not visible to the street. And I think these are my comments. I know it's... Yeah, the main point I have is with this so-called retaining wall or the planters along the alley. I think it's gonna add additional mass. It's gonna stop the water from, you know, basically flowing. It will also not... It's a very narrow space. You saw it today. It's a very narrow space. It will make it even narrower. So, I'm not sure if having this kind of design with the planters makes it functional. But if the applicant wants to do it, that's their choice. And that's the last point I have. Yeah, thank you.
Do you have any thoughts on the concrete paving that's proposed by the architect on the south side? He made a request for us to discuss that.
The concrete?
There's on... You can see it on the plan on L3.10. Or I think he's also got it on A1.
A1, yeah.
Yeah, A1's better. That's a better representation. That's the landscape I was looking at. I mean, I'm just kinda...
Is it where it says sunset pavers?
It's on A1.1. On the south side, there's a series of large
Yeah, and for the...
concrete pavers. Or I don't know how you describe them. They have landscaping between them.
Well, there are planters all the way from the front to the back on the side of the alley, right? So, there are smaller, narrower planters in the beginning, and then they get bigger and bigger and wider. And the two planters in the back, they have relatively large trees in them. And usually, trees do not grow in that environment, so I don't think that that's gonna be feasible to have trees in these planters.
Because you don't feel they have enough light? It's on the south side.
Space for the rooting system. The roots need more space.
Oh, you didn't think the roots are gonna...
So, the landscape, I guess the landscape architect should have a look at that.
Okay.
Because if you look at some of the elevations, it shows fairly large trees there, right? Like going up to the second story.
One thing that I can add in there to help the commission maybe is that while we do have a landscape plan in front of us, there's still going to be a review of that formal landscape plan by the City Forester for things like that.
All right, for final approval on that?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. All right, those are your comments?
Yes, that and the other one is I would like to see the construction management plan. I think there's so little space available to work with. It's gonna create a major problem for the neighbors and for the street as well.
Yeah, I think the building department is the one that reviews the construction management plan.
Yeah, we have that as a condition of approval.
Yeah, that's a condition of approval, right. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Commissioner Delvs, your comments?
Yeah, I like this house. And I think the current one is troubled. You had some good words there. It doesn't really know what it wants to be, but it's still there. And I really accept your explanation, Craig, about, you know, that you've kept the basic bones of the house and stripped away whatever that faux French provincial maybe was. And I think everybody here agrees that that should have gone. I think there's just some debate about, you know, whether you should go in a contemporary direction or another direction. With the advent of the Carmel Preservation Association, I have doubled down on my caution in approving modern and contemporary homes. I just always think extra hard because we've got a lot of citizens that have voiced their concerns. In this particular case, I'm supportive of the contemporary thing. I think there are plenty of other instances of contemporary homes on scenic. I kind of view scenic as its own thing. And yet, in your direct neighborhood, left and right, there are none. And our guidelines, you know, one of the underlying but major themes of our design guidelines is diversity. And if there was a house just like this next to you, I think that might be a problem. But that's not the case here. There's still very different homes on either side of you. So, I am supportive of the contemporary design. In fact, I quite like it. I think it's a big improvement. I think it will be a very pretty home. I think the quality of the materials is obvious. And I also find that that's a very important part of our design guidelines, is just the quality and the natural materials used. It's a lot of glass. I'm okay with it. Beyond that, I think staff has this right. I wish we could give you that 12 square feet. That's a sweet desk. But I just feel we can't. So, sorry. Just to my colleagues, the planters, I think you'll be fine with planting stuff. There are things that grow on south-facing, I'm sorry, north-facing walls. I have plenty of them myself, and you'll find an answer. And Michael, I'm sorry, on the pavers, is the question, is our recommendation from staff that those concrete pavers not be put in?
I think that's staff's recommendation.
It's the use of concrete as a material. So, it's basically look for an alternative...
That's permeable?
Yeah.
I think we gotta go for permeable. It's... You're at the bottom of the hill there. You need as much permeable as you can get. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Locke?
Thank you. I would agree with Commissioner Delvs' comments on this. However, do... By the way, I do want to say it's really pretty. I do think there might be a little too much glass, but it's not something that really bothers me, except that maybe reconsider the glass rails on the upper decks and stuff just based on the comments that people walking on the path look up. It's real easy to see what's going on on the second floor. But again, that's, you know, you've got the cedar, which is really pretty. But anyway, just that would be one comment I have. The other one would be divided light windows might make it look less glassy, but I'm really happy with everything. I do support condition 6... No, 36, I think it is, the change in the materials on the concrete. Is that right? Yeah. And then also... Or no, yeah, yeah, okay. And then 36, special condition 36 was... But I think it's fine.
Okay. Commissioner Allen, your comments?
So, I agree with Commissioner Delvs in terms of when you're on scenic, it's a little bit hard to get away from... I mean, it's gonna be a flat roof so that you don't block people's view, and so that just kind of lends itself to this type of architecture. So, I think it's a good design. This is a combined concept and final. I'm not sure if we want to do that. I've been going back and forth about whether or not I want to commit to that. I do think that I would go with most of the staff recommendations, including unfortunately not being able to provide that extra square footage on the curve. I understand the design aspect of that. It does look very nice in conjunction with how you've curved the deck, but because you're already in non-conforming, I just don't... I don't think we can do that. And then I wanted to focus a little bit on San Antonio. It looks like you also have a gate proposed, and so I just wanted to, like, get a visual. So, the whole entire front is just gonna be closed off on San Antonio, and I was wondering if there was a different way of doing that. That would be my only concern there. And I'm not a fan of the concrete, and I was really hoping that you would splurge and do a Carmel stone wall along the 12th Avenue walkway, but I realized that that could potentially be a cost issue. And so, overall, I like it, and I think it'll really improve this property.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Yeah, I like this design overall. I think it... I mean, I understand Carmel Preservation is a point of view, and I think the real, the thing that defines that for me when I look at these projects is context. And it's how these houses fit into the context of the neighborhoods that they're in. And clearly scenic, this house, I think, fits into the context. Most of the houses on scenic are a little more contemporary. There is a focus on more glass. That's because it's on the beach. People want the views. That's to be expected. This is in the beach overlay zone, which has an 18-foot height restriction, so I appreciate the fact this building's coming down. The building as it is presented, particularly to the south, is massive. This is Battleship Galactica, if I've ever seen it. Up close, I was just really stunned at how massive this mansard interpretation is. It isn't just a simple mansard. I mean, it literally comes down, you know, the two stories on that south side. So, what the architect has done is really lighten this building up. Used traditional materials, a lot of nice stonework, wood. And so, I think it really is a design which connects to the architectural history in the context of the neighborhood and also what is used throughout the community. So, I am supportive of it. Unfortunately, we're really limited by the municipal code as far as what we can do as far as adding square footage, so I'm in agreement with staff. There's a nice corner there that the view can be developed. Although I do like the design presented, it's a little softening up. It kind of creates a soft corner there, but I think our hands are tied on that one. And other than that, I think that the resolution as presented as staff, we can kind of go through those special conditions real quick here, see how the other commissioners feel about this.
They look good.
So, did I miss something? Is there... I didn't see the detailed look at doors and windows and heights, and I didn't see that.
On the plan?
Like anywhere in here. So, I just wanted to call that out. Like, are these standard size or...
I think... Are there 6'8" doors or 7'?
Uh, 7'.
7', okay, so they're... And they're gonna be all clad bronze?
They will have to be full metal.
They're full metal, okay. So, they're metal, okay.
I think Evan's going through...
I think Evan talked about that.
The plans right now. If you want us to put something up on...
Sure.
You want to? Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we actually have a window schedule in these plans. I would... See, that is something we usually do have.
Yeah, that's why I have the concern of a final tonight, but I'm open to...
Well, we can put directions.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to put some direction in there or add a special condition...
We can make sure that the window sizes don't change. I mean, yeah, the drawings are scaled, so we would know dimensionally what they are.
I mean, we can put a condition that a window schedule with elevation views be added.
It is something that we require for the building permit because the building department uses it to make sure that they...
I think you're probably planning on doing it anyway, aren't you? Yeah.
So, there's no change to the plate height?
Is it 8' or 9'?
So, in the overlay, the plate height is 18 feet for two-story elements and 12 feet for one story. The existing plate height is... Go back a page.
Is non-conforming, is it 20?
It is a non-conforming plate height, so we weren't able to determine the existing plate height because of the mansard roof form. We couldn't get that point of connection. However, with the proposed, the existing structural wall is to remain, and it's noted at 21 feet 7 inches. And again, the allowable plate height is 18 feet.
But with the removal of the mansard roof, it's gonna come down a little?
It comes down a little bit.
Okay.
But most of that mansard is actually a skirt applied to the outside. It's actually not true.
It's not a structural, it's just a... It's really a decorative element.
Yeah, it just slides down. It doesn't actually go in. Those walls are straight and vertical, and then they just apply it to the outside.
Okay, so we have some special conditions here. 32 is just acknowledgement of the conditions. 32 is eliminate of copper gutters and downspouts. 34 is the construction management plan, which we mentioned.
Actually, on the drawing here, it looks like the windows are taller than seven. They look more like eight-foot windows. That's why we need the sizing.
Which page are you looking at?
Right here. You see from here to here.
It looks probably about eight feet. I'm looking at the.
Ten feet, ten feet, or nine, nine, I don't know how, nine feet from here to here. This window should be ten, maybe eight?
I'm guessing it's about eight. I'm looking at the plate height to the finished floor level. Maybe seven. So the, the top of the plate height is at 69 and a half, the finished floor level is at 60 and a half. This is the south elevation on the, the second floor, and it looks like maybe there's about a foot, foot and a half of header, so that would be eight, eight feet or so.
So I want to propose that this is concept only because I don't want to be surprised.
So it's the height of the door. The windows along the south elevation match the height of the door. So I can pull that over.
And those are, those are seven-foot doors, or eight-foot doors?
There's an eight-foot opening that faces the water, right?
Did you jump on the side?
Yeah, so I'm just looking right here. So this is the door that would exit onto that, that catwalk I discussed. So this is the door with the, the little arrow, and then these are all windows. And then if we look at the... These would be the same size.
So what, what, what are you proposing, Commissioner Allen?
So I guess I'm still not clear on this. So when you say that's the door, like, what is the door? Like, what, where is, where am I seeing exactly what that door is and how, what the size of it is? Nowhere on here?
So this is the top level? And it's the door that exits out onto the, the new catwalk?
Right, I got that. So do you have the door? Like, what is the door? Like, is it like a?
Craig, you want to come forward and tell us?
Typically, yeah.
Answer somebody's questions.
Typically, we see like a list of measurements of, like, the door is this size, and it's, you know, made by this manufacturer.
So we have the manufacturer, I just, I don't think we have.
Yeah, we have Arcadia, right?
Yeah.
It is Arcadia.
Is Arcadia making the doors, too?
Excuse me?
Arcadia's making the doors, too?
Yes, the doors and windows are called, sort of an integrated system, all with that steel. And a, and a lot of those bigger openings are at eight feet, right? That, that folk face the view side.
Maybe not in this plan set.
Those details were not all provided here. I actually think part of what's happening here is Evan was kind of trying to do us a little service. We've, we've gone back and forth a lot, and I think he was trying to help us consolidate this, because we've been in this process for over a year. And I'm just, this is my conjecture, but not, all those details were provided as part of this.
Okay, so is it a seven-foot door or an eight-foot?
It's eight, those are eight-foot doors, those bigger ones there.
Okay, so I don't recall us ever approving eight-foot doors, but, I mean, that's.
Can I just give you our, our logic on that? That house, like many, is fairly narrow and faces the water, and it's sort of an open plan, so you step back. And, and it's very apparent when you have a six-eight or even a seven-oh head height, and you have the massing of the doorframe and so forth. The farther you step away from that, you get, you cut off the trees, you cut off the sky, you have a wonderful shot of the road and the beach, but you don't get that atmosphere of what that view is about. And so it, I think it's a, a really strong desire to be able to capture a little bit more of that sky and that light, particularly in Carmel. And particularly, you sort of step away from that. Of course, right against the window or door, it doesn't matter, but you get 15 feet away, and you start to have that horizontal oppression that occurs with that head, and so that's what we're trying to achieve.
I understand.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, my, my feeling in terms of design is I think the height of the, the doors and the windows complements the design, so I don't have a problem with it, but how do, how the other commissioners feel?
I agree, and I, Mayor, and I respect, fully respect where you're, where you're going. I see what I'm approving, so I'm not afraid of a surprise. And, I mean, really, the window detail is a building permit thing generally. I mean, we, we get a whole, almost a full building spec often, so I'm not troubled by that, lack of, of that schedule, because I think it's here, so.
I mean, my only concern is that it is going to be a lot of glass. Like, you, it will be very apparent.
I think taking these windows down a foot just introduces, not, I mean, it's, now you've got another horizontal element that's not glass. And I don't think what, my opinion is, I don't think that's what this wants. I mean, I think this, that changes this a lot, and I, it might just seem kind of stubby.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking of our guidelines.
Any other comments about that? I personally, I think, what I, what I see about the design is I see it's really lightened it up, but there's a contrast in this design between the masses of stone which anchor it to the site, and then you have the, the vertical siding and the glass which kind of lighten it up. So it's, that's what I find interesting about it. If you drop a header in there, you're gonna end up with this, this mass of solid material running across there, which I think is gonna con, create a conflict there. But, you know, the, these are design issues. I, I know what you're talking about in terms of, you know, our guidelines, they, that's, and that's a discretionary thing.
Yeah.
So I think in this term, in this context, the design warrants the use of glass as presented, because I think it works successfully, but that's just my opinion. Do you have an, you have an opinion on this, Commissioner?
Yeah, I think it would be useful to have samples, to have samples and to see the, the windows themselves, because some of the modern windows are so thin, they can make the frame really very thin. And if you think about, let's say, looking at the south elevation, if you're looking at eight feet high, I would say 20-something feet long, it can look like one single piece of glass. You would almost, if it's, especially if it's like in aluminum or something color, it can look absolutely like one single piece of glass, 24 by eight, and that's a huge amount of glass. So we need to look at the window and understand how that's gonna be.
Are these, are these aluminum sash, or are they?
They're steel.
Oh, it's steel, so you're gonna have, you're gonna have a small, you have a narrow finessration, that's the whole point.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, yeah.
So steel is like.
Yeah, I don't, it's not, but it's gonna be black, though, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so you're gonna see it. I mean, it is a narrow finessration, though. That's the, that's one of the reasons why people are using these steel sash, is because you can, it's a stronger material, and you get a narrower type of finessration. But I don't, I, I see your point, but I, I think because of the black outline, you're gonna see the individual pieces. Plus, there's a, it seems like there's a, is that a post between those? It's like, there's, there's a white, there's a white.
There is wood.
Yeah, there's a wood post or some structural element there that, that's gonna be encased in wood. Yeah, I don't think it's gonna look like one piece of glass. I don't, I don't see, I mean, it doesn't look like one piece of glass in the drawing. I assume these, the finestrations in the drawing, you're, you're using the same, using the same scale as the actual finessration? Well, we could, we could condition this that the applicant provide a sample to staff. Can we do that? Does that work?
I think I'm probably leaning against this, but I think I'm outnumbered anyway, so I don't think it'll match.
Well, you can make, you can make a motion. You know, if you want, if you want, you want to direct this in a certain way, make a motion. And that's the best way, then we can, it'll either be supported or it won't, and we can move on to another motion.
Right, right. I mean, the thing is, I understand, from a design standpoint, I totally understand this. And, you know, it, it's beautiful, definitely. Does it follow our guidelines? I'm having a really hard time feeling that it follows our guidelines. And so that would be my, that would be the reason why I feel like, I don't know. So in terms of a motion, like, I, I wouldn't even be able to come up with one that would make sense in this situation.
Well, in that case, I mean, you know, we have, we are, we are obligated to give direction in a motion. I think that's, I think, you know, that's, that's our obligation, other than.
And it sounds like I'm outnumbered in, in terms of, I mean, it sounds like other people are, are okay with this, so I'm okay moving forward.
Okay, well, I was, I was in the process of kind of going over the, the special conditions of the, the motion that staff has presented. If I'm on the right project here. I got a little, it's got landscape conditions, special conditions, oh, here we are, yeah. Okay. So let's, let's, let's go back to that, and then we can see what we get. Okay, so 32 is just acknowledgement. 33 was elimination of copper gutters, downspouts, that's pretty consistent with our decisions we've been making because of pollution. 34 is construction management plan. 35 addresses the removal, is that the, the additional floor area? That's removal of that. 36 is the concrete site coverage shall be removed for permeable. 37 is right-away encroachments, those will be removed prior to issuance of building permit. And then 38 was bringing the landscape lighting down in conformance with the municipal code. 39 was the landscape wall, I assume that's along San Antonio. Should be, have the fence built, modified, so the fences along the, the pathway there.
And Chair, could you include what Shirley recommended, too, around the specifications around building, rebuilding that wall, that there isn't irrigation?
Irrigation, yeah, it's a good idea.
Yeah, no, no irrigation, should be attached to the outside of that. Put that in the landscape wall. And then 40 is the, oh, that's, that's the 12th Avenue wall, fence reconstruction, that's the one. So that, no landscaping should be on the outside of that. And 41 is demolition, non-conformers, all exterior demolition shall be in substantial compliance with approved demolition plan. Okay, so do we want to add any things to the special conditions there, other than what staff has done? We add, we add language that no lands, no irrigation should be attached to the exterior of the fence on 12th Avenue walkway fence? Anything else?
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve the resolution as provided by staff, with the only change being to item 40 to ensure that there's no irrigation on the exterior side of the fence, as Michael just said.
And elimination of condition 15, which was inadvertently put in.
Yes, thank you.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to accept it with the additional language as per Commissioner Delve's. Any more discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Allen?
No.
Commissioner Delve's?
Yes.
Commissioner Karpetkov?
Um, no.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Chair LaPage?
Yes, the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the public hearings. Unless I missed one. And we have our director's report.
Yeah, thank you. Just a quick report tonight. You probably know, but last night, we had a city council meeting. They introduced the first reading of the city wireless ordinance. They introduced the version as recommended by this planning commission, so there's no changes from the version that came out of the planning commission. So the next step then will be to come back next month at city council for a second reading, and from there, we'll go on to the coastal commission for certification, because it's part of our local coastal program. So we're well on our way now at this point, it was pretty smooth.
Was there support from the Carmel group?
Yeah, there was, there was support, absolutely. Yeah, it was, it was, it was a good meeting. And then, just to let you know where we're at on staffing, because you remember, Surray did move on to another locality. Our recruitment has been in process already, which is great. We, you know, big thanks to our HR department here to turn that around so fast. We've actually got our first round of review of applications tomorrow, so hopefully we'll get our department filled back up relatively soon. And I'll keep you posted on that. And that is all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for the directors? All right, well, thank everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
We adjourned.